To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with which I am just a part of.
Thank you. Next, we have consent items, which is our minutes from the last meeting. Any corrections, changes? Okay. We have a...
I need to approve as presented. I don't think I like its working, but I still move to approve.
And I'll second that.
All right. Please vote. That motion and the minutes are approved. I don't see anybody here for public comments. Did we get any letters or any cards submitted at all? Okay, then there won't be any public comments right at this time. So then we will go on to item B with CUP 415 AT&amp;T Mobility.
Paul McLaren, Senior Planner, has prepared a presentation for this item.
Good evening, Chair Vandermeulen, Commissioners. Tonight I bring you CUP 415, which is a new camouflaged wireless facility at 528 Freedom Park. The request is from the applicant is for a conditional use permit for the installation of a new camouflaged wireless communications facility on a replacement sports light standard at Freedom Park in the rural exclusive residential zone. So this is a view of the project site from a parking lot looking south. So the light standard that would be removed and replaced is the one in the red circle. So it is basically the furthest one back from Pleasant Valley Drive, and it's also right along Freedom Park Road in that hedge line or the tree line there. So as you're driving down Pleasant Valley Road, this would be where you would see the light standard, is where the red arrow is kind of pointing, and that's where the replacement light standard would be. So the existing light standard is 70 feet, three inches, which for this particular portion of Pleasant Valley Park is the same height in general as all the others. And then the light standards are three feet-ish below that, so around 67 feet in height. And then what is being proposed is a taller facility inside of a radome. So this taller facility is 90 feet, nine inches tall. It has lights that are at the same height, so around 67 feet. They would also be installing a 300-square-foot equipment enclosure. And inside the enclosure, there is also going to be an emergency diesel generator for backup power in the event of power failure. So the importance of this radome is that the radome provides the actual camouflage so that you're not seeing the individual... There's actually 12 antennas in there. You're not seeing each individual antenna and the wires and all those sort of things that connect it. So it makes it just a nicer-looking facility. And the radome wouldn't have been possible if they had, like, spread this out into a much larger array, and it would have looked really odd. So they kind of stacked the 12 antennas in three different sectors, which required that they go an additional 20 feet in height. And that allowed them to put it inside of a radome. So this is the site plan. On the left, you see Freedom Park Drive with trees that are along Freedom Park Drive. And then in the bottom dotted line square, that's where the light standard will be removed and replaced with a larger light standard to be able to structurally handle the additional load and weight that this facility is going to put on that. And then just to the north of that is the equipment enclosure. Right now, to the north of the equipment enclosure is an RC car track that Pleasant Valley Parks has. And then there's a bit of a dirt lot right there that's kind of unimproved. And then the baseball fields are off to the right of the actual facility. So here are the simulations. The top right facility is how it looks today, or the top right picture, I should say. And then the bottom left is how it would look as proposed. So it's definitely going to be, you know, a significant presence out there. But again, it's not as significant as if it were an array that spreads out 12 feet in diameter. This is just a six-foot-wide radome, 20 feet in height. So right now, this is the existing coverage without this facility. So the proposed facility is the one circled in red. The other dots that are on here that have the CS numbers are existing antennas. You know, the one on the far right is the water tower in Old Town. So these are just other facilities that are out there. And this is what coverage you get. And so the green is, you know, indoors you have signal in all the green areas. Where it's yellow, you have, in vehicles, you're going to have a signal. And so this is for AT&amp;T. So again, these signals are for AT&amp;T customers. And then the blue is an outdoor signal, or the, I'm sorry, the pink is an outdoor signal. So that's the only locations that you will have an outdoor signal as it stands right now. With the new facility, it's basically going to give you, you know, indoor signal for almost the entire area around them. A lot of the area that they're not getting the indoor signal, there aren't really a lot of housing items there, nothing really that... There aren't a lot of buildings that you would need an indoor signal, or would... Yeah, there's not a lot of buildings. So the height really here isn't really about extending their coverage. The height is really about getting that radome installed, and that's why they're asking for the additional 20 feet. And then the applicant has already gone through the FAA, Federal Aviation Administration, and the Camarillo Airport, and they submitted an application. And the FAA did a study, and that study both evaluated whether or not this facility, both in construction or in the actual permanent installation, would cause any kind of hazards to air traffic. And the determination by the FAA was no. And then they also reached out because they wanted to verify that the signals and the frequencies that are going to be being transmitted from this facility would not have any impact on instruments in aircraft either. And so the FAA has also said no, that based on the information that was submitted, this won't have any impact on aircraft's mechanical or electrical equipment. So this project was reviewed in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act, the state CEQA guidelines, as well as the city's environmental guidelines, and it's been determined that it's categorically exempt from CEQA as a Class III for new construction or conversion of small structures. And staff recommends that finding this, that the planning commission finds project categorically exempt from CEQA and adopt a resolution approving CUP subject to the recommended conditions of approval. If the planning commission approves, it's final unless there's appeal within 10 days of the action. And that ends my presentation.
Okay. Thank you. Trying to get mine up here, which I'm having a little bit of trouble with. Would you go back to the photo that you said was from Pleasant Valley Road? I'm a little confused on the location of the post from what I was looking at in the other slide and what I was looking at on the information that we had. Yes.
So in this photo, you really can't even see the pole because it's set back so far.
Okay, so it's not that pole right there?
No, it's not...
That the arrow is on?
No, the arrow, that's a telephone pole that's going along Pleasant Valley Road. The actual pole itself is set way, way back behind that.
So it is back by...
Yeah.
That's why I was a little confused.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Then it's where I thought it was. Thank you.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I jumped in on questions. Any questions from staff, for staff?
I don't have any.
I have no questions.
Okay. Then we can talk to the applicant.
Yes, the applicant is here.
Please. Open public hearing. Okay, so with that, first of all, I will open the public hearings. I'm missing my gavel.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jerry Ambrose with Yukon Group, here on behalf of AT&amp;T. I actually don't have anything to add to Paul's presentation. I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay.
No questions.
No questions?
Okay.
So I guess my question was, yes, you do need that much space to get that amount in. So that gives you the coverage then to go into the borders of all the other areas that we saw in the...
Yeah, it's kind of like a honeycomb laid over the land. So this is a honeycomb that's not filled in. So this will sort of fill in that graph.
It fills all that in?
Yeah, that's... We call that a honeycomb.
Okay.
You can sort of see that if you look at it.
And I noticed when I was out there that there's a taller light post that's like in between the back, where the two fields kind of meet in the back. But you felt that it was, would be less obtrusive then in that corner where you're looking at?
Yeah, as I recall, I think they're all about 70 feet high. Paul, I don't know if you did any more research on that, but...
They're all close to 70 feet tall, yes.
Okay. So it looked like there were like three different heights looking at it, but then I'm looking from the edge of the parking lot, so...
Right, yeah, they're all 70 feet on that end of the park. As you go east, they get a little bit taller.
Okay.
That location was also chosen because it's the northernmost pole. AT&amp;T, as you can see, needs a lot of coverage to the north up towards the 101.
Okay.
So that's one of the primary factors for picking that pole.
Yeah, part of it, when I was looking and seeing that one that was taller and central, but that would even raise it higher than that. But I felt it might have been a more centralized location, you know, to go out and reach places. But this meets your needs then for going north.
Yeah, definitely, yes.
Okay. I think that's all the questions that I had.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Then, let's see where we are. There are no questions. Any other questions? Okay. I'm not used to not having any other questions. So then we will go on to closing public hearings. Call for resolution?
Architectural.
Anybody?
You can do architectural review committee report?
Oh, that's right. We, on each one, so, sorry. Thank you.
Yes, we did have an architectural review. Staff gave a presentation of the facility. It's very similar to the one that we reviewed recently at Bob Kildee Park. The pole and the radome will match the current light standard, and this combination light standard and AT&amp;T facility will be a match of that. It meets the design standards and guidelines for the general plan. So we, the committee recommends to the planning commission approval of the architecture for this application.
One thing, can I ask a question at this then, since you reviewed it? And I didn't check on that prior, but the lights are the same amount of lights replacing, the same amount of lights on the pole.
Light, electric.
Right, okay. Just wanted to clear that and make sure that anybody that's listening knows that we're not taking any lights away, we're replacing the same amount of lights on the pole. Okay?
Correct.
All right, thank you. Then we can call for a resolution?
Okay, resolution number PC 2023-13. Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Camarillo approving a request by Jerry Ambrose of the Yukon Group on behalf of AT&amp;T Mobility for a conditional use permit for the construction of a camouflaged wireless communications facility located at 528 Freedom Park Drive within the rural exclusive residential RE zone further described as CUP 415.
We waive further reading and vote to adopt.
Second.
Okay. All vote, please. That passes unanimously. So with that, then, we will go to item C, which is conditional use permit 426 with AT&amp;T. And we're still kind of...
Thank you, Chair. We do have a presentation for the commission tonight, and that will be given by Melissa Beebe, your planning technician.
Thank you, Melissa.
Good evening, Chair Vandermeulen and members of the planning commission. I'd like to present a request from David Elliott with Yukon Group on behalf of AT&amp;T Mobility. They are requesting approval of a conditional use permit, or CUP, for installation and operation of a new camouflaged wireless communications facility. The proposed location is in Springville Dog Park at 801 Via Zamora. It's in the rural exclusive residential zone, and the general plan land use element designates it for public use as a neighborhood park. This is a view of the project site from Via Zamora looking north. The proposed location is on a new faux eucalyptus tree to be built within the stand of trees along the north property line. This is a closer view of the project location from within the park. It will be outside of the fenced-in dog area. The proposed facility would be camouflaged as a 48-foot-tall faux eucalyptus tree. The project would also include a 304-square-foot equipment enclosure. Five trees would be removed to make room for the facility, and eight new trees would be planted nearby to help it blend in with existing trees in the area. There are no other wireless communication facilities at this location. The proposed faux tree and equipment enclosure would be located near the picnic benches at the north end of the parking lot. The elevation drawings show the proposed faux tree and equipment enclosure next to the existing fence on the property line. Staff has worked with the applicant on the original proposed design to widen the foliage to ensure that the antennas are completely within the canopy and to give the tree a more natural rounded look on top. The proposal includes antenna socks as well, which are fabric covers printed to match the foliage to help the antennas blend in better. A wind loading study has been provided to show that the tower would be able to withstand wind speeds in this area, and it is designed for a 93 mile-per-hour basic wind. The applicant has also provided material samples, so you can feel the texture of the bark and see the leaves. The front and back of the board show example photos of faux tree facilities that were installed by the same manufacturer with varying heights, shapes, and styles. None of the photos show the exact same styles as the proposed facility, but they can give you an idea of the quality of the camouflage. The photo simulation on the right shows what the proposed facility would look like. The antennas and radios are concealed by a dense faux foliage made from radio wave transparent materials. The proposed equipment enclosure would include a faux natural stone veneer to match existing retaining walls around the picnic area, and you can see that material in the bottom right picture. The applicant considered alternative site locations and concealing designs before settling on the faux tree at Springville Dog Park. Other nearby sites that would have allowed AT&amp;T to cover their gap in coverage were not selected due to lack of interest from property owners, low ground elevation, and closer distance to residential properties. At the proposed site, the faux eucalyptus design was selected as the least visually intrusive design. A stealth design isn't possible at this location because there aren't any buildings or other structures on the property that a wireless facility could be integrated into. The faux tree camouflage and additional trees planted nearby, selected by PVRPD for their suitability to the park, would help it blend in with the existing grove of trees in the area. The nearest residentially occupied lot is 140 feet to the northeast and is well below the FCC's maximum permissible exposure, or MPE, limit for the general population. Based on worst-case predictive modeling, the EME report concluded that at the nearest walking and working surfaces, the maximum power density generated by the antennas is approximately 18.48% of the FCC's general public limit and 3.70% of the FCC's occupational limit. The EME report also modeled power density from all carriers on site called composite exposure. Any carrier with a new installation that contributes more than 5% of all the applicable MPE must implement control measures. There are no existing wireless facilities at this location, so based on the EME report, the new installation would contribute more than 5% to composite exposure. The EME report proposes to install caution signage on the tower nine feet from the ground. This propagation map illustrates the existing AT&amp;T network. You can see the service thresholds here. Urban areas in green are where subscribers are anticipated to have access to service while indoors. Suburban areas in yellow are where service is anticipated in a vehicle. And outdoor areas in purple are where they are anticipated to have service only while outdoors. You can see coverage is limited in this area. This propagation map illustrates the individual contribution of the proposed facility if approved. And this propagation map illustrates coverage with the existing network plus the proposed The project was reviewed in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act, or CEQA, and the state CEQA guidelines, as well as the city's environmental guidelines. The project was determined to be categorically exempt from the provisions of CEQA under Class III for new construction or conversion of small structures under CEQA Guidelines, Section 15303. Staff recommends the commission find that the project is categorically exempt from the provisions of CEQA and adopt the resolution approving CUP 426, subject to the recommended conditions of approval. The action of the planning commission is final unless an appeal is filed within 10 days of the date of their action. That concludes the staff report on CUP 426. Thank you.
Any questions?
I can make one.
Pardon?
I have a comment when it's approved.
Okay. Go ahead and make it.
I'll make it.
Just for the record, this is outside of the 1,000-foot limit that I would need to recuse myself. I do live near this facility, but it is outside of that, and I don't see that affecting my decision tonight, but I just wanted to put that on the record.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. No questions there? Would you give me the, excuse me, the wind strength that it's approved for? Again, I didn't quite catch that.
It's designed for 93 mile-per-hours. And of course, when they are ready to get their building permits for the site, our Building and Safety Department would ensure that it complies with all building standards.
Okay. And is 93 miles an hour high enough for the winds that we've been having?
It's the rating that's appropriate for this area.
Because I know, like, a couple years ago when we had a windstorm that was over, at least in our area, over 100, so miles per hour.
Yeah, so they will design this based on, there's a civil engineering guide for each area, and it's about sustained gusts more than anything, but I really think that the engineers will make sure that it's going to be designed to that. And then the materials themselves also. We've gotten spec sheets on them to make sure that leaves and things like that aren't going to actually be blowing off of even the materials so that they're sturdy enough that it's going to last and be looking good for a long time.
Okay.
But yeah, the 93 miles an hour that it was designed for is appropriate for this area based on the civil engineering studies that are done for the area.
Okay. And I think my few other questions are probably for the applicant, so... All right, with that, then, I will open public comments again and invite the applicant forward.
Hello, my name is David Elliott with the Yukon Group on behalf of AT&amp;T, and I have nothing else to add to that presentation, but I am here to answer any questions that I can.
Thank you. No questions?
Just one, and I'm curious about the foliage around this facility. It looks pretty thick. Does the, does the output signal need to be higher to get through the foliage on that, or does that just not make a difference?
No, this foliage is designed to be, allow for the RF signals to go through it. So just because it's thicker doesn't mean that, you know, you have to increase the signal strength to penetrate. So they are designed to be permeable.
Got it. All right. Thank you.
Then I'm going to kind of maybe restate what I thought maybe you were saying, but as well as what I was thinking, is that because it's with other trees that are so dense, does it have to be so tall so that the antennas are above the tree height of the other trees?
That's a great question. So we do need to have the height above in order for our signal to be unobstructed. If we do plant trees that are exactly the same height, then it's going to defeat the purpose of the cell site.
So because you had the other trees, it would not, you wouldn't be able to put it at the same level of the other trees and get the antennas to work where they need to go?
Correct.
Okay. And then it looks like now that I can see, like, where the equipment enclosure is going to go, is that like on the edge of the berm to where you might have to do some leveling for that, to put that in?
There will be some leveling. It looks like there's a little bit of a grade that we're going to put our enclosure in. I think we might have a picture of that. Do we have a picture of that? Yeah, there you go.
Okay. So that shows kind of where it's going to be cut into the berm?
Yes.
Okay. And then looking at the map as far as the area, it looks like this is going to cover, like, a large part of, like, the Spanish Hills area and going up through there?
Correct.
And it'll, because then you've got the, all the hills going, so it should still work?
Yes.
You're hoping it will still work?
I'm not the engineer, but they say yes.
Okay, all right. Yeah, actually, I mean, the one picture answered a lot of my questions. Thank you, Paul, it did. So, it was, I went out and looked at, and I couldn't really quite picture where this one-car garage area was going to sit and, you know, how it was going to all look. And then I did read that, you know, there were going to be trees planted, but I didn't find where it said there were going to be trees taken out. So it answered both of those questions for me. I don't think I have any other questions. I mean, especially seeing what it's going to look like, you know, after being out there and looking at the site, so I don't think anybody should have any questions with that. And it seems like it's far away from any houses, that it'll be quite a ways above any of the houses. Okay. I don't have any other questions.
Just with staff, we did notice that the people within the area, and there were no comments about it, correct? Okay. Just want to make sure that those neighbors did have an opportunity to weigh in if they wanted to. That area where they're going to be putting in is a very lightly-used part of the park. It's sort of a out-of-the-way area. Most people go in and out of the entrance, which is on the, near Via Zamora, not all the way to the back of the property. So it's a very lightly-used portion of that park. I don't know that anybody will actually even notice it once it's completely built.
Yeah.
And I just wanted to confirm, you did say, at least in the architectural, that you guys are going to build a pergola to kind of make it look...
Correct.
Pretty?
Yes. It's going to match the existing retaining walls that are there.
Okay.
Perfect, thanks.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and so then, the end of public comments? And thank you, David.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
And then can we have an architectural review comments?
Yes, staff made a presentation at the architectural review meeting. Melissa Beebe, thank you for that. And we looked at the faux eucalyptus tree, which appears to be in keeping with Pleasant Valley Park's tree-lined concept with this park. The enclosures we've discussed is similar to the retaining wall materials that are in close proximity to this location. It's within the design guidelines of the general plan, so the committee recommends to planning commission approval of the architecture.
Closing public comments now. Okay. Thank you very much. Then we can call for a resolution, please.
Thank you, Chair. CUP 426, resolution number PC 2023-14. It's a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Camarillo approving a request for a conditional use permit for AT&amp;T Mobility for the construction of a camouflaged wireless communications facility located at 801 Via Zamora in the rural exclusive residential RE zone further described as CUP 426.
I move that we waive further reading, and I move that we adopt the resolution.
No, second.
Thank you. And please vote. And that's unanimous. Thank you. So with that, that finishes that part of the evening, and we can go on to director's comments.
Thank you, Chair. So the May 16th Planning Commission meeting may be canceled. We'll let you know if that's the case, and then we will be sending out a cancellation notice. We also have items tracking for the June 6 meeting, and I also wanted to just let you know that it's going to be picture day. So after the meeting, we will be taking a picture of the planning commissioners, which we'll post on our website.
And that'll be at the June meeting, then?
The June 6 meeting, correct.
Okay.
And that's... And that's, that concludes our director's comments or report.
All right. Then, with that, I believe we're adjourned.